I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 13th, 2018. Please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We note the role.
Noted.
Mr. Spiz is excused, including Mr. Nolt. I have item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting agenda for Thursday, September 13th, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Berger. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes for August 23rd, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Hunwick. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will pass. Item six, public comments on items not scheduled for the public hearing or that are not on this agenda. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and you've got three minutes for your comment.
My name is Larry Rosener. I live at 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. The subject I am going to talk about and ask the questions on is not about -- it's about going to the township hall. I went to township hall Monday to pay my taxes and get -- look at the inspect the meeting package. I paid my taxes in about a minute, went in, no problem. I then went to the building department, got in line, and I learned about what you have to do to get a shed in your backyard, how many copies you have to have, and so forth. So, I now know if I'm going to put a shed in my backyard. I've really got an education. Once I got up there, in order to get the package, I asked for the package to inspect. It took three trips into the management office, I think it's a deputy supervisor, to try to get the package. First trip, well, the package wasn't available. Second trip was, the package was going to cost money, but I could come back tomorrow. Now, this is, the package was supposed to be available on the 6th. And the last trip that I waited for while I was there, I got, thanks to the lady that was at the counter in the building department, going back, I got some part, not all of, the agriculture section that's going to be talked about later tonight. You know, why, when we have it published in a paper on the 6th, you know, the meeting package is not available. You come in, you can go, and this is six days later, five working days. Why do we have to go to the building department, which, coming in here frequently, that's probably the longest line and the busiest thing? If I don't pay my taxes on time, I get penalized. In a meeting, I got three minutes to rush through. So, I should be able, I don't think it's unreasonable, to get a correct package of the total meeting to inspect when it's published in a paper. We should be able to do that. I would think we could do it where you're not in line and waiting and spending a lot of time. Maybe that discourages people from coming and getting the packages, which I hope that's not the objective. So, I did check in the paper, and I'll give you this copy. The adjacent Addison Township, as an example, you don't have to go to the building department. And I did meet with someone that does some business there, and it's not like we're doing business here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Sir, come up to the lectern, your name and address, please. You have three minutes for your comment.
Yeah, my name's Joshua Finley. I live at 1862 North Baldwin Road. The matter I want to discuss is a longstanding one. It's Elkview Estates in Bull Run. I know them people have gone through a lot of heartache, but it's been brought to my attention that that road is finally on its way to being made a public roadway, and those people's issues have been rectified over the course of the past few months. In an attempt to access my property off of that roadway, now that it's going to be made public, a couple of the residents back there had an issue with that. Came to the township general meeting yesterday, and they came to the conclusion that the township would deed an unestablished third-party holding company of four-foot strip of land across the back of my neighbor's property to the south and my two neighbors to the north for the sole purpose of restricting my right-of-way off of a public roadway. I think that Oxford Township residents have already allocated an astronomical amount of money to rectifying those people's problem in excess of three-quarters of a million dollars over the past two decades. Yes, they had to cough up a little bit of money, but that's a problem they bought into when they purchased those homes. And now, out of spite, basically, the township's going to grant them a piece of public property that our tax dollars went to buy for the sole purpose of restricting the rights onto my property, the right-of-way Michigan law. I don't think it's ethical. I think it's irresponsible behavior on behalf of the township to do so. I think there's already been enough irresponsible behavior done with that subdivision over the past 20 years. I don't think it needs to continue. And so, I'd like to see to it that that matter's addressed formally, and I'd like to put a stop to that.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item seven, commissioners' comments. Mr. Curtis?
I have none.
Mr. Berger?
I have none.
Mr. Hunwick?
I have none.
Ms. Rosner?
I have to agree with Mr. Rosener there, how hard it was to get the information for tonight's meeting. I came on Friday. I spent hours here at the township. Wasn't able to get it. Tried all week, emailed the chair. There was parts that were important, and, you know, I tried for days to get it, and not getting it really affected my ability to prepare and to let people know. And I really think we should be able to do better on this. I had even asked prior to that for Mr. Berger to get me that information, and it didn't come. So, I'm just expressing my frustration that I was not able to get that information, no matter how many times I asked where I went and how I did it.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number eight, the public hearing. Proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 67A regarding Article III, zoning district regulations 3.5, schedule of use regulations for ag, agriculture, SF-3 suburban farm and SF-2 suburban farm. Let's go to the first item, the presentation by the petitioner, the township. Want to go to our township planner?
Yeah.
And then if the ORC chair or chairman for that committee wants to pipe in, please.
Sure. So, the procedure for making amendment to the zoning ordinance is that topics are identified by the planning commission, I believe, and it's brought to the township board for approval to schedule out annually what topics will be or what ordinances will be reviewed. So, part of the schedule for this year is the schedule of uses, and we've begun with four districts, agriculture and suburb -- or the SF-3 districts. So, that's SF, the three, excuse me, SF districts, so SF-1, SF-2, and SF-3. We began looking at these through the ordinance review subcommittee, myself, a couple months ago, looking, from what I understand, to identify ways to streamline these, to eliminate uses that were incompatible with the intent of the master plan, and to simplify some of the regulations where we put on additional regulations that state law does not require and that low ones were considered unnecessary. Some of those being for the child and adult family daycare, which we identified referencing the state law with that, the one following that, adult foster care family home, referencing the state laws that, in that as well. And then, following suit with one of the other regulations here, and for the yard waste composting facility, again, referencing the Right to Farm Act, state law for that. It's a general overview of the changes. Tom, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I think we clearly tried to strike certain things out of the special land use areas. Maybe we didn't hit all of the concerns that people may have. I did it somewhat from my memory, from when I've heard people get up in previous meetings and comment, but we did strike out the oil and gas extraction. We took out recreational vehicle storage. We took out temporary housing for seasonal labor. We put agribusiness uses in a way that they can be done if they're in compliance with the Right to Farm Act. So, before, you know, we took out cider mills, farm implement sales, repair operations. We took out livestock auction yards and crossed all those right out. So, they're not permitted uses within those categories anymore, under the special land uses for agricultural property, under the ag property. We may have missed a couple areas. We're open for discussion this evening, and if we have to, we'll take it under advisement, and we'll take it back and reevaluate it and see if we can address some of the issues and concerns. We have a lot of public people here tonight, so we're open for discussion when that time gets here, under our public hearing, and we'll go from there. Also, we did look at those three SF, excuse me, two SFs in the suburban farm under special uses, and typically, when you go to SF-3, we took some of the things and took those out of the special land use categories also. And we're open for discussion, so that's probably going to be next.
Would you like that motion or make that motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, public hearing is open then. It's time to take in public testimony. So, I see there are a number of people from the public here. So, what we'll do is we'll have you come up, hopefully one at a time. Come up, give your name, your address, and you have three minutes to make your comment. If the comments that you have have already been made, we do ask that you refrain from making them again, okay? With that, we'll open up the public for comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Do you want to copy what I'm going to say now or afterwards?
Oh, I'll copy, it'd be great.
Okay.
It helps my memory. I mean, I'm just going to be honest about it.
My name's Kathy Warfield. I live at 1220 East Davison Lake Road with my husband, Paul. We recently moved here in March on a little bit over 13 acres, and in April, we purchased another 10 acres. According to the master plan, we live in Hunt Country Estates. We used to live in the city. We moved here because of the privacy, seclusion, and beauty of the area. In addition, we moved here because of the existing gravel roads, tree lines, trails, water resources, nature, horses, cows, birds, ducks, geese, cranes, turkeys, deers, and occasional coyote. If you guys all lived here a long time, maybe you take that for granted, and we don't. There's not a day that goes by that we're not in awe of our surroundings. This is God's country to us here. It is undisputed that both of our cur -- it is undisputed that both our master plan and zoning ordinance place a high priority on the preservation of the unique and historical Hunt Country in the northeast section of the township. As residents here, we are asking you to conform to the master plan. Based on MCL 125, 3203, Section 203, a zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, to encourage the use of lands in accordance with their character and adaptability, to limit the improper use of land, to conserve the natural resources and energy, to meet the needs of the state's residents for food, fiber, and other natural resources, places of residence, recreation, industry, trade, service, and other uses of the land, to ensure that the uses of the land shall be situated in appropriate locations and relationships, to avoid the overcrowding of the population, to provide adequate light and air, to lessen congestion on the public roads and streets, and reduce hazards to life and property, to facilitate adequate provision for a system of transportation, including subject-to subsection public transportation, sewage disposals, safe and adequate water supply, education, recreation, and other public requirements, and to conserve the expenditure of funds for public improvements and services to conform with the most advantageous use of lands, resources, and properties. The zoning ordinance shall be made with reasonable consideration of the character of each district, its peculiarity, suitability, and particular uses, the conversation of property, values, and natural resources, and the general and appropriate trend and character of the land building and population. The master plan must be used as a basis for the zoning decisions. The zoning ordinance and official map in themselves should not be considered as a major long-range planning policy of the township. Rather, the master plan should be regarded as a statement of planning policy and zoning should be used to assist in implementing the policy. I, along with other members of the community, strongly believe that adult and child institutions are not to be permitted within the master plan of Oxford and should not be allowed in Hunt Country. I'm a registered nurse. I've worked with adult foster care homes all my life. As a visiting nurse, I have a license in the state of Michigan with the Michigan Department of Health, and they have rules and regulations that need to be followed. As far as the Child Care Licensing Act of 116 and 1973, that was updated in March of this year, and the adult foster care facility learning. They're the bibles with the licensing affair in the state of Michigan, and the master plan is the bible in Oxford Township. We cannot change those. What happens, we have to work hand in hand. We can't just change the rules and tell Michigan, and say something's different than what the Michigan Department of Community Health says. There's no room for these types of institutions in Hunt Country agriculture because of the unique physical characteristics of the Hunt Country area. These institutions will not make a positive contribution to Hunt Country because they would not promote a balanced approach to the land use in the area and would be responsive to both demographic and economic factors. We would lose a very large tax base by having these institutions because they would be non-tax exempt, and that we would be losing money. There would be more calls to these institutions by the police and fire department, which will cost the taxpayers more money throughout the township because of their tax exemption statute, and it would decrease our land values. These type of institutions are not single-family homes with owner-occupied activities or agricultural farms with activities like the master plan states. There would be far much too much traffic in the area of these institutions due to the high degree of tragic traffic that would occur. Gravel roads are not designed to handle increased traffic volumes. Two cars in motions can happen in a lot of places. This is not a place for high-density traffic. We need to avoid paving roads and widening to the greatest degree possible in the northeast and northwest quadrants of the township, especially along these natural beauty roads. We need to promote equestrian operations central to the identity of Oxford. This is horse country. We need to keep it horse country. We need to preserve the native topography of the area, the landscaping. We, our community, need to preserve these trees and the woodlands whenever possible. If we amend the zoning ordinance, we cannot do so to protect what we've worked so hard to keep. There's a time and place for everything. Building institutions in Hunt Country is not the answer. Once we lose the beautiful landscapes and the country atmosphere, we can't go back. It's gone forever. Institutions are most suitable in commercial zoning areas opposed to residential agricultural single farm. Let's not destroy what we have. Let's fight to keep it. Let's fight together for what we strongly believe. Let's follow the master plan, and let's do it together as a community, please. Thank you.
Thank you.[1250.26][1250.26][applause] Okay, is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Please state your name and your address, and I'm going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Paul Warfield. I'm Kathy's husband. I live at 1220 East Davison Lake Road where I live with my wife. We have three children and 10 grandchildren. We moved to this area, as Kathy has stated, through the natural amenities surrounding us, the beauty, and so on. When I became aware of some of these issues that are going on in the township, that's why I'm here to speak on this matter. The Charter Township of Oxford master plan is officially documented. You're all aware of that. It has designations for Hunt Country Estates, Hunt Country Agriculture, zoning districts for agriculture in SF-1, or sorry, SF-2 and SF-3. These districts are all intended to have low population and maintain the environment that exists at this time. There are permitted uses for these, in zoning ordinance 67A, there are permitted uses for these and also for special land use. What I'm seeing in a short time that I've been here is the opposite. I see conflicting land use that is incompatible with the land that abuts existing non-conflicting land. This type of use does not conform to the master plan, and it conflicts with zoning ordinance 67A. There's perpetuated use that I see that's not specifically listed as permitted use in 67A. This type of use does not conform to the master plan, and, as I said, it conflicts with 67A. There's non-compatible special land use with adjacent uses of land that will have a negative impact on adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood. This type of use does not conform to the master plan and conflicts with zoning ordinance 67A. If this continues, the community will change dramatically. Within our short lifetimes, it will not be recognized by anyone who is present here or not. Changes in matters of health and safety, more police patrols, increased traffic on gravel roads not designed for it, and increased taxes that will result. All you have to do is look south of this committee, and you'll see what will happen here if this continues this way. As residents of the land section, this land section, we are asking that you conform to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and immediately amend our zoning ordinance to remove conflicting uses contrary to the master plan. Add the necessary definitions and authorize the creation of a subplan to preserve and protect this area. Take the necessary actions to preserve it, or we will all lose it. Also included with my statement, and I'll provide a copy with you, is the sections that we wanted to recognize as requiring change. Thank you for your time.[1426.36][1426.36][applause]
Is there anyone else out in the public wishing to speak on a point that has not been made? Come up, sir.
My name is Jim Munus. My wife, Donna, is with me. Live at 3575 Gardner Road, Oxford Township. I'd like to address the Hunt Country Agriculture area for the Oxford Township master plan. Previous community action in our area, we, the community, in the northeast quadrant, rejected the proposed dump site as well as the issue of permitting a so-called windmill farm. Now, these were all a while back, but any of you that have been around here know what we're talking about. And our neighbors in Lapeer County recently rejected our proposal to permit 120-acre convict rehabilitation operation. We, as Oxford Township, must preserve the Hunt Country Agriculture area as described in the master plan, specifically residential, single-family homes, farmland, and farm-related activities. There must be no deviation to these two entities in the Hunt Country Agriculture area. In conclusion, commercialization in the Hunt Country ag area will greatly tarnish Oxford Township's image and will lead to landowners pursuing lower taxes. I don't think anybody wants that. We're not hearing much from anybody else other than Hunt Country. So, we're looking for you folks to take us in the right direction. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Diane Kangas, and I live at 5895 Hempstead Road, Oxford. My husband and I moved out to this area in Hunt Country two years ago. I lived in Oakland Township for 31 years. I owned a 30-acre horse farm there, and when I moved to Oakland Township, it represented a lot of what I have right now, although we didn't have a hunt there. But it was beautiful, open land, just like where I live right now. And I want to give you some advice. It doesn't look like that anymore. And the reason I moved only 14 and a half miles north of my old home was for the preservation of an equestrian area. And it was like that in Oakland Township for many years. You know, I had 12 horses on my property. I'm very active in carriage driving, and when it got to the point that there were carriages flying by me on the road, I told my husband, "We've got to get out of here, man. We're going to get killed by cars flying by." People would, instead of slowing down, they would speed up on the gravel roads, and we were on a gravel road, mind you. So, you know, my husband fought me on it. He's like, "We're not going to leave our beautiful land," and I'm like, "We're going to be dead if we don't." And I'm going to tell you, this probably should not be a surprise to you, that's what you can expect for this area unless you really take action to preserve what we have. There's a group of us here tonight who have been very involved in land trail preservation and doing a tremendous amount of research. There is a national group called the Equestrian Land Conservation Resource. I encourage you to go online and look at what that national group has done to help equestrian communities across the United States for the preservation of their areas. They have helped places like Tryon, North Carolina, which has an incredible horse community down there, so much so that the entire town calls itself a horse community as its town of Tryon. Places like Barrington, Illinois, only less than 40 minutes out of downtown Chicago, has had great, wonderful success preserving their equestrian communities. Places like Woodside, California, where I have a sister who lives there, right in Silicon Valley, has preserved their equestrian community for over 40 years with multimillion dollars and tons of pressure from building and development, and the town of Woodside has taken it upon themselves to totally preserve their horse community in their area. And you can ride all through Woodside, California, on your horse through people's backyards because of trail and land preservation there. So, I beg you to take a look at what Equestrian Land Conservation Resources has done across the United States. They have example after example of places that they've been successful, and I really beg you to take it upon yourself to do that in this community, too. Part of our equestrian group, we would actually like to step it up one additional step, and that would be to not only think of Oxford, but to think of Metamora and Addison, as well as Dryden Townships, for the preservation of the equestrian area because we have something very rich and very rich and resource here that is really, frankly, a Michigan gem. There is really not an equestrian community like this anywhere else in Michigan. It's the largest equestrian community in the state of Michigan. And so realize that, people, this is a gem that we need to preserve. Thank you.
I've just gotta ask you not to raise too much noise, okay? We are getting an opportunity to speak and we'll hear it. I mean, please, let's move this along in an orderly fashion, okay? Anyone else out in the public that has something that has not been said?
Larry Rosner. I live at 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan. 1830. I would just like to start by saying I had some of the things that have already been said a lot better than I can say them, so I'm not gonna take everyone's time doing it. I'm gonna just talk about one thing that really kind of surprised me when I look at it. And when you look at a subject called campgrounds, 5.6 special use, you know, why would any of the residents that you've just heard talk, even, you know, I won't say no one, there's always some percentage, but I was here at a previous meeting and, you know, we talked about the same thing. Campgrounds was one of the things that, why? You know, why did it get in there? And looking at this, if you look at C and M in that special use, the east side of Cobblestone Lane, the whole east side, the three-quarters of a mile, under campgrounds, we could have along every home, A, in one place, under C, it would be 100-foot setback. Really great being on acreage and being that, what we're talked about, to have for three-quarters of a mile, your backyard backed up against that further on. When I look, read further on that section 5.6, when you get to section M, it says 75 feet. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's certainly the way I interpret it. But even so, 100 feet, a campground, all the way down Oxford Lane, every resident having it. Also, when you get to M, my house, the average house on Cobblestone Lane, just the home, on the campground, you would have two campers parked in that area. Two campers, two to three. That's the average size. That's what, in that document. The campers, they can be 15 feet apart. That's pretty close. Oh, they talk about in there a dust-free area. Does anyone in this township know of a dust-free area with cars and vehicles and things moving in campgrounds? Water sewer. I back right up, my backyard is on Cobblestone Lane. When the gravel company started, when we first moved here, they started doing a little more mining and my water table in the aquifer dropped and I had to drop my well down. If we put in that kind of density that's talked about in campgrounds, people, you know, we got water and sewer. Well, there's no water and sewer lines out in that area. So it's all, get it out of the ground and put it in. The other thing is we've got literally hundreds, probably thousands of acres in the master plan and so forth of gravel pits, some of which should be retired. They only take out a few loads of gravel at a time just so that they don't have to. If you want to put a campground in, certainly the gravel company, that property would, close to 24, would be much more suitable than a campground in the hunt country or agriculture. We have three great, great facilities, equestrian facilities, already in the hunt country. We have Winnecon. We have Rattle Dancer. And the last one, which is right there, close to the corner of Oxford Road and Ray Road, is Matador. That is an absolute, the amount of money and what was put in that equestrian center is awesome. And those three places, at least a couple of them, I already know that when they have horse shows, they have camping there. So we probably should be looking at trying to build if we're going to do something like that. Work with the trails. We've got those centers. You know, if we want a campground, it can be an equestrian campground. So thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, I'm Ginny Benson, 3270 Barber Road in Oxford. I have a letter from my neighbor that I'd also like to read. "To whom it may concern, I have lived on 40 acres in Oakland Hunt Country, in Oxford Hunt Country since 1950 when we bought our property. Seeing some of the development that is happening around us, it has become obvious that we need to amend the zoning ordinance for our area to protect the rural, quiet, open quality of our neighborhood. I have spoken with some of my neighbors and I agree with the list of proposed changes to the ordinance that Ginny Benson will hand you tonight, which I forgot and left at home, but it's the same list that Mr. Eunice has already given you. And ask that it be included in the revision of the master plan. Signed, Marjorie Moore, 3463 Barber Road." And I can hand this to you. I've lived there on Barber Road for 30 years. I own a corner. And in the last year and a half, 135-acre parcel directly across the street from me to the south has been subdivided into 10s and 20-acre parcels. And directly west of me, 160-acre parcel sold recently, and they're not sure yet, I don't think, what they're gonna do with it there. And to the north of me, across the street, 118-acre parcel sold. And that's being subdivided. And we need some of these changes. It's obvious. Some of these are very outdated. I think it says that we can have livestock yards and large equipment sales yards in our neighborhood. So obviously, some of these are no brainers that we need to change. We've all looked at the list. I agree with the list. And I hope that you'll adopt it into the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak or make a point that has not been made? Yes, sir.
My name's Evan Moore. I'm a horse veterinarian up in Metamora in the Oxford area. I live at 3182 Jonathan Road, Oxford. Just wanted to point out that change in the ordinance such that, or the master plan or such that we would exclude some of these businesses that people think are gonna change our community, and I totally agree, you know, may face some pushback. And that makes people hesitant to take on that task because it may not be easy. But as an example, our neighbors to the north, Metamora Township, has been fighting for many years, the residents up there, to keep a huge gravel pit that could operate for 20 or 30 years and would bring multiple millions of dollars to the person trying to make that happen, has been defeated multiple times. And gravel is much different than a business that we are talking about because it's only in a certain spot. You neither need to take it there or you gotta look elsewhere. These businesses have many other places that they could go where they would not be changing the community as gravel trains would if they were allowed to operate up in Metamora Township. So despite this potentially causing some issues legally and making us have to push back against somebody whose right to do business currently is going to be changed, to me, it's well worth it. And this community would contribute all that's necessary to make it happen. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Margaret Culver, 3385 Delano Road. My farm happens to be on the cover of your township little notebook. I have been here in the country at Winnecon Farm since 1976. I fox hunted out here since 1972. I think that you need to have an understanding that what we have here is very unique. I've been invited to Olympic gold medal riders' homes in other countries and here in the United States, and they do not have, where they live, what we have here. And when I have invited these horse professionals down to visit my home, they're very, very impressed with the area that we have here. I think, I don't know if you're aware, but this year is the 90th anniversary of the Metamora Hunt. And I would like to give you this to look through. We bring in a lot of money here. There are a lot of people that spend good money to be in this area. I think that you need to have an understanding that horses is a multi-level industry. It goes from farrier to veterinarian to rider to trailer to coaches to farms to breeders. You know, it is a very complex and complicated industry that we have located here in Michigan and that it is very unique to this area. You don't find this everywhere. You might have to go down to Tryon to find a place that's like what we have here. I think that if you start moving in institutions that are not compatible with the setup of the agricultural horse industry in this area, then you are upsetting the balance of what we have going here. If you have institutions, you're moving in a large population, when the people who live here and ride here are, become the minority population. You know, if you've got 60 people living in one area and you've got farms around it, you'd have to go quite a distance to find 60 farmers to equal that institution, the number of people living in that institution. So I think we need to be very, very sensitive about the development of this area and trying to preserve what we have here and what has been in existence for over 90 years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Blonk. I live at 3601 Barber Road. And my family has lived here, out in the equestrian agricultural area since 1976. So we're long-term residents of this area. I'm supportive of all the comments that have preceded me, and so I won't repeat those items, but I would like to add my voice to the importance of maintaining the residential low-density environment of the agricultural equestrian district and to avoid commercial development, which would be inconsistent with the neighborhood and alter the historic character of the area which we, the residents, want to maintain and perpetuate. I've read in the Oakland, the Oakland Press, that Oxford Township is one of the fastest-growing communities in Oakland County. I'm sure you've read the same report. It was headline news on the front page of the Sunday edition a few weeks ago. Despite this designation that Oxford Township has received, I have to say thank you to you, the planning commission, to the zoning board, and also the ordinance committee, because you have been respectful of the agricultural district and you've taken actions to help us preserve our rural character. And now I'm going to specifically highlight a comment that Ed Hunwick made at a meeting, a joint meeting of the planning commission and the board, of which he said, "When residents come to meetings to speak, we listen." Yes, you do, and I hope you'll continue to listen to our requests. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to make a statement that has not been made? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna make one on behalf of someone that wrote in to me. I'm gonna read this in.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said comments that have not been made. How do we get on the record that the ones that have not spoken agree?
Maybe you should have people stand if they agree with what was said.
Sure.
If they feel like they're not being counted.
That's why.
Sure, sure.
So my name is Alan Kent with my wife Linda. I live on 1524 East Oak Road, Oxford, Michigan, and we 100% agree and support the comments made previously. Thank you.
Very good.
Everybody that does agree, that is spoken, you all agree.
We will all speak out on this end. We live in the area and we agree.
Okay, very good.
Same thing.
This letter is dated September 12, 2018, members of the planning commission. "I thank the planning commission for presenting a group of ordinances, tax amendments, after literally years of requests by the public. The law requires the township consult with organizations and citizens in creating and implementing the master plan. There has been no notification requesting this input that I am aware of in this path, as demonstrated today, is a deviation from normal procedure. The proposed ordinance changes are woefully inadequate and must be addressed by citizens with knowledge of the ag/hunt area. Both our current master plan and zoning ordinance must place a high priority on preservation of the unique and historical hunt country in the northeast section of the township. As residents of this section, we are asking that you conform to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and immediately amend our zoning ordinance in order to remove conflicting uses contrary to the master plan. Add the necessary definitions and authorize the creation of a subplan to preserve and protect this area. Changes must be made immediately to the zoning ordinance in order to preserve and promote the scenic rural character of the township's outlying areas and maintain and promote equestrian operations central to the identity of Oxford. We must address this issue immediately. The joint PC/Trustees meeting appeared to be headed for quick action, yet the ball has been dropped. PC canceled meetings and cut short other meetings that had time to address this issue. We, as the township, have literally hundreds of acres at stake immediately. We need to protect what is left. There must be assurances made that people buying land now will have the ability to use that land as the master plan states. Only with that confidence will they invest the huge amounts of money in land and facilities to keep the positive draw for Oxford Township. We have one of, I'm sorry, we have one of what is thought of as a handful of locations in this entire country with the combination of draws. The others have developed extremely successful for their community. We now have an example that we should try to match." Dr. Bruce Myers, resident of Oxford Township. So with that, I think I look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing at 7:52 PM.
No support.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Berger. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will close the portion of the public hearing at this time. Now, let's get a few comments from maybe our planner on any of these changes.
Well, can we kinda jump in first?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure. We already, I mean, the planner already spoke in the beginning.
I think what, I think what, you know, we've done is we've listened to a lot of the comments from the public that have concerns for that specific area, and I think we should, how do I want to state this, because we probably have to put it in a motion? Well, we don't have to put it in a motion. We can take this, we can take this information under advisement, and we can table this until a later date, and we can go back to the ORC with this information and try to implement some different changes within the proposals that were presented tonight, and then come back to the Planning Commission with another set of proposals, I guess is how I'm trying to say it. Because there were things that some of these people said tonight that specifically weren't in my head, and we sat down with a very small group of people to try and help start writing the amendments to these conditions under the ag property. So I tried to take notes as well as I could, and I appreciate people giving me documents because I forget sometimes myself, but I think there's areas in there that I have questions in regards to, and so I'm not going to go into the specifics tonight, but I'd like to maybe look at what we've done in the past and maybe consider some additional changes. Can we take this under advisement and then bring it back, or how do we?
If I might, I mean, we're supposed to be appointed here to represent segments of the community. You have a Planning Commission member here who represents this section of the community.
Yeah.
Yet you failed to include me in any of this. So, you know, if I might.
Technically, it slipped out of the woodwork faster than I realized. We only did this on the 23rd of last month, and we only put it together as a proposal, and then all of a sudden, it's now in front of us less than four weeks later, but.
Right, I appreciate that it's actually here tonight, but the fact that everything that we've been saying wasn't included, or did you even run it by us? I have here that I'm going to pass out. This is what the members of this community submitted. On this is what they would like to see for the permitted and the special uses. And so it, you know, it's all in there. On your 11-page document, you're going to see on pages six and seven what should be listed as the permitted uses and the special land use. So they went through and they put this on here. What was really important in this district is to eliminate everything that was not a residential use or an agribusiness or hunt country type use. And this is speaking of the entire hunt country area. So you've done a lot of work in the master plan about qualifying what that hunt country area is, and it consists of the ag zoning, a big portion of the 10-acre lots, consists of most of it, and then there's some of the five-acre lots that skirt it. And the zoning allowed uses and permitted uses are almost identical in each of those districts. The only thing that really is different in there is the actual lot size. And so when you're going through what's supposed to be permitted and special land use for this area, and remind you, everywhere in your master plan and your ordinance, it says you need to preserve this. It needs, it's not going to be paved, you're not going to have services. And you have uses on here like a campground. Now, I don't know if any of you have been by the Sportsman's Congress that's there. They live there 24/7/365, and it's a trailer park. It's very dense, there's a lot of traffic. We already have one in the area. We don't need any more. It certainly does not promote agriculture. It doesn't promote the hunt country. It does nothing to promote the hunt country, and that use needs to be removed. The only use we would like to see on there is equestrian campground, and that would be short-term, and that would be related to the horse show facilities that we have because it's common for these horse shows to have people camp with their horses. So that would be something that would be done in conjunction with an activity that's ongoing in that equestrian area. You've got churches, which really need to be changed to religious, I think it's religious organizations, but regardless, that's a non-residential use, and we are permitted to remove those in this area. Again, we are taking away any non-residential use. We're not excluding about one particular group or another. No institutions, no schools, no universities, no private schools, no golf courses, no private airports, no yard-wasting compost facilities. We don't have anything in a commercial nature, and those all need to be removed, and by right, in zoning law, we have the ability to classify this area as a residential agricultural use only, and we can uphold that. Now, when it comes to certain foster care and adult daycare-type facilities, the state equates certain uses with a residential use, and those would be allowed in our district because it equates to a residential use. But it's very important for us to specify which of those equates to a residential use. The adult foster care facility has three different sizes. The first size, which is the 1 to 6, that equates to a residential use comparable to what we would see in our community, and we would find that to be harmonious. Anything larger than that would be of an institutional nature, and it belongs in a different zoning classification, and you, as planning commissioners, need to specify that specifically, which is in that list that we gave you. It defines that, what it is. The same with childcare homes. Childcare homes, which are your drop-off types, are allowed by right in a residential zoning district, so we can't exclude that. There's something that's needed in a district. However, a large one where you're having up to, what, 12 kids, that has to be allowed by special land use and only if it meets criteria. That's what the law says, so it would have to meet that criteria to be allowed, and we need that specified. So it's very important we specify that. If there is a use that's considered that is outside those uses, which the state says is residential, we don't have to have it in our zoning district, and it doesn't belong there. We're on gravel roads that are narrow, they're impassable, they're closed to traffic sometimes during the winter. Our roads can't accept that extra traffic, and all that extra traffic is actually detrimental to the vision that you paint in the master plan of, you know, being able to ride and have these equestrian activities, and that promotes the development and the infrastructure in that area if you can actually promise that you're going to keep to this vision. And so that's why we put those out there. Everything that's on that list is something, the list that we presented, is an acceptable use that we have. Now, if some things in the future want to come in, then we would look at the master plan, you'd involve this group of citizens again. It's a small group of people with a large land mass and say, you know, a golf course comes in, but they're proposing to have a trail network and all these other things to it, so that would require a change in your master plan and a change in your zoning, and that creates a discussion where we can get a good plan here. But when you automatically open the door to it, there's no negotiations. You have something that locks out our area. You may look at a golf course and say it looks great, but for a hunt area, it closes everything off, it adds traffic, and it's detrimental. So my proposal would be that you accept the changes that we've proposed and adopt those.
As Tom alluded to earlier, we can go back and review all these requests, and even, you know, we talked about it earlier before the meeting, and we stated, you know, yeah, maybe there are certain items in the special land uses we could do away with. Again, we're here to listen to the, to the, to the public, to the landlords. I'm not, I certainly understand where they're coming from. The other thing that we have to take notice of is what we're allowed to do by law as well, but I'm certainly, I have no problem going back and sitting down with Tom and the rest of the ORC and going over the list and reviewing it and come back with a modification.
Well, one problem we have, we have large lots of acreages for sale. We have now the airport that's for sale, and we have these big pieces that are for sale, and we have a zoning ordinance that's contrary to the master plan, and there's things that are allowed right now that would destroy big sections of this area. And we've been telling you, this is critical. This is critical for our area, yet street cheese got pushed in front of us, and food trucks got pushed in front of us, and everything else gets pushed in front of us, and ours gets pushed back. It's been two years, and now we want to delay it again. We have a plan that you can bring forward, and that would require then legal review, just like your other plan would. But everything that's in there is legal, it's been well researched, and it's a solid plan, and from there, we can work with it. That plan also requires that you're going to have to rewrite sections of that special land use for certain things, because they're way off the bat, like camping and things like that. They need to be worked on. But, you know, that ordinance hasn't been touched in so long, yet this area is so valuable and so rare and so worth preserving, we actually have to put the time and money and priority into doing it.
Well, we heard. I'm sorry, the public comments closed. We're trying to have a discussion amongst the commissioners, okay? Please. We are starting to do this, that's why we got this thing rolling. It's the ORC that's come and put this before us. I think there are things to change on the list that it stands right now. So I think we do need to go in and strike a few more items, because there are some on here that still don't really make sense. I can't see an airport thing out there. I don't get it, so.
Well, I move to accept. I would move to accept what I've proposed here. It's well thought out. It parallels with what we have. I've went through, you can take a moment and look at it, but I move that we accept this and bring this forward as what we want to have in our ordinance. I believe there was a petition out there, and it said that same thing, and it's what this community worked on. If somebody had a copy about that, that would be.
I don't, I don't, well, personally, I mean, I'll, I'll take the document, and I just glanced at it quickly while you gave us tonight, but I don't know that I would want to make a motion to accept this from a point of view that we're going to vote on it tonight to present it in that fashion, but I want to, I took everybody's information that they gave us, and I think we should look at all of it, but, and I'll look at this, I'll, I'll be happy to.
Yeah, this petition, this is what was given to me. This summarizes exactly, and I'm going to hand this in for the record, but it has on one page the special use and the permitted use.
This is, this is already in this document, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's summarized and just exactly what we need to go in. It's consolidated, so I'm going to pass that to the chair for the record.
All right, I think this needs to go back to ORC, okay? With the items that Ms. Rosner presented tonight, I want that reviewed, okay?
Well, I received three written documents and then took notes. I guess that's the only way I can stipulate what I received, but.
And I've got more notes. I've got seven items on that list that I think need to be discussed about being removed from there.
We had some highlighted prior to coming to the meeting tonight after we already met earlier today with the ORC. We just, but that hasn't been presented yet, so in all fairness, I think we need our chance to present again what we felt we should, what we missed, maybe. I guess I'll be honest about it from the first time we did it. Ed's been absent from a few meetings. John and I kind of did a lot of this with Lauren based on some memory, and now we've got some documents to go over and look at and read, so we won't try to hurry through it.
Well, we would, we would like a moratorium on any action, any building going on out there until you address these issues, because we feel like we haven't been listened to.
How can we do that as a planning commission group?
You can recommend.
We can do, recommend a moratorium?
We can recommend to the township board.
I don't know that I have that ability to do that, but as a planning commission member, but.
We've done it for other things that have come up, that people have felt important.
The planning commission's recommended a moratorium for stopping construction?
I have no idea about that.
Yes, we have.
About stopping construction.
About issuing certain types of businesses and all that, we have done that.
At least present that to the township board then, because I don't, I don't know that this body is the body to do that, personally. That's my own gut feeling, so I don't know how to do that. I wouldn't know how to do that as a moratorium from the PC.
So I guess maybe if you had a timing, because it's been a long time, there's been a lot of dragging on this, and there has been meetings canceled where this issue could have been dealt with, so what's the timing we're looking at?
I'd like them, the ORC, to meet again, have this reviewed, get the commissioners' input prior to their meeting. We've got the, we've got the public comment.
Let me get it right. You'd like us to meet, our next meeting date is actually scheduled, we have one scheduled. You'd like us to meet on that meeting date and discuss the information that was presented to us.
Yes.
Then you'd like us to bring it, and you'd like us to then identify that to this planning commission for open discussion at another meeting?
With the revised list of special uses of that area.
Okay, but with another public hearing?
No.
Just as a planning commission discussion?
Planning commission, to make sure what we've put forth is what we want to put forth for recommendation.
As a proposal.
Correct.
Well, why don't, why don't we put this on the next, why don't we put this on the next planning commission meeting? Why don't we discuss it at the next, instead of having to delay for all this, why don't we put this on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting, so we all can discuss it, come to a resolution, and vote on it?
What are we going to put on?
Put on there, you've got my, my resolution. You guys can all add your own before that. We can come here to the table, and we can decide what we're going to do and vote on it.
We can. Can I make a comment really quick? Through the process of us considering these items and also the changes that we already recognized need to be amended in that document, I think for the next meeting, if we make those changes, like we talked about, address it in the ORC meeting, make the changes and come forth with a summary, and we can definitely list out all of the items that you guys suggested, but maybe integrate already into some of it, because part of what saves time as well is to be able to craft the ordinance. So if we can put those in, we can have those as a, you know, kind of an appendix list to that ordinance as well, but I think it would save time if we came back to you with the amended ordinance for discussion with the planning commission. Do you agree?
Yeah, I'll be fine with that.
So you're saying wait for the ordinance review, the ordinance review goes through all this, and then we wait for that process, and then it gets put on planning?
It's before the next meeting.
It's before the next planning commission.
Yeah.
It would be at the next planning, you would, it's the same timeframe.
It's one week. You have one week to do it, then.
The next planning commission meeting? No, two weeks. Just two weeks.
It's one week, because we don't want the packet to be late.
You're, you're, you're kind of, well, I mean, I'm.
Well, technically, we didn't get this packet till, like, for those of us who came, till today, so that really hasn't been a stopper for, for getting it done, but.
Yeah, as a discussion, well, as a discussion item, that's not going to have any action taken on it. I think the planning commission could receive it later than the packet goes out, so that it can still be on the agenda. Yeah, if ORC is going to meet next week, we need a few more days past that.
We're all, we all, we all have jobs. We, we do this semi-part-time, but I don't know if we can do it in a week. I'm just being upfront about it.
You know, all the work's done, and it's in that report we gave.
Well, I know what you're saying on this. I haven't had time. I've read portions of it just briefly, but, well, we're going to have our next meet, we're scheduled to have our next meeting. I guess we'll bring it to the, we'll do it at our next meeting, and then we'll, we'll present it. We'll present it back to the, I don't know if we'll have everything ready in exact format. I guess I'll say it that way. You're asking for quite a bit in one week.
We've been asking for years for this.
Well, you may have. I'm, I apologize. I just kind of got started newly with the, on the ORC part of it, but.
What's an ORC?
It's an ordinance review committee.
I understand. I'm trying to conduct a meeting, okay? I can't get it done with this planning commission. I understand what you've said, okay? There are certain constraints.
You're exhausting by going on and on about this. Please.
You can see the frustration and what I've been getting, and I've been expressing this to you for years, and there's been foot dragging, so we're just.
Yeah, I understand that. I want to make sure this is addressed by each and every planning commissioner, okay? Needs to be digested by each and every one of us. Two of them aren't even here to review it.
All this hostility isn't necessary. We're all trying to work together for something.
I understand, and I'm, I understand too, that a lot of these uses need to come out of there.
It shouldn't be getting this. It shouldn't be getting, yes, we're right, we're going to take accountability, and we're going to do it, and let's not make excuses, let's do it.
I know. I was, I'm, I'm with you on this. I'm, I'm trying to get it to go through as well, but I've got to do it within the constraints where everybody here that has a chance to make a decision about removing things and that and the other thing, have a chance to do it. I'm being told I can't get it done by the next meeting? All right, then I can't get it done by the next meeting?
I haven't heard that. Heard that you can.
That is not correct.
I've heard you could.
That is not correct. That is not correct. A week is a lot of time for most people to continue with their job. Please, help us here. We are looking out for our land.
All right. This is what I want done then. Schedule your next O R C meeting.
It is.
Review this package.
All right.
Take in all the public comment. I'll leave you the list of my particular ones I have issues with.
Okay.
Remeet on it, reset up this permitted use.
And then you're saying bring it back to the P C.
Bring it to the, bring it to the P C meeting and I want it added to the unfinished business section.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Moving on, I'm sorry.
Can we take a couple minute break in case the people don't want to stay? Otherwise, there will be a lot of disruption.
Yeah, that'll be fine. We'll take a five-minute recess. Let's move on to item nine, which is unfinished business, which we have none, so item 10, new business. Final site plan for Grace Premier Senior Living. Is the applicant here?
We are.
Okay, can you just give us a summary as to where we've gone since the last meeting in the preliminary, I'm sorry, the preliminary, okay, the other site plan, the early one, preliminary site plan.
So again, it's Clark Harris and David Falkerson from the Grace Premier Assistant Living Center, 985 North Lapeer Road, and we are happy to be back in front of you guys from our preliminary site approval to talk about what has gone on since that last meeting and what continues to go on in the essence of saving time to not go back and reiterate everything we went through at the previous meeting unless this board would like to. Let's kind of move forward with what we were looking at and really David and I wanted to start with just a quick little, working with two municipalities in the beginning had some challenges, which we spoke about at the first meeting, and it has been really great to see Lake Orion and Oxford come together on a development that's going to be in both communities, which we knew would create challenges, but to see how the two communities work together in a governmental fashion, specifically having Bill Dunn and Chris Barnett in a room and Tom Berger and Lake Orion's building inspector and Jack Curtis and Lauren and input from, from Jim to see this come to fruition has been, has been really fantastic. So we've had those extensive conversations. We have been working diligently on the list that was put together of conditions from our last meeting and we'll give you progress reports on those and what is still on that list today. We had Dan Kelly from the Lake Orion's attorney has been working on crafting the inter municipality agreement. We have gained conditional zoning from Lake Orion on-site approval. We, since our last meeting, we had an opportunity to be in front of the Z B A. We had a couple of requests of variances that we really needed to make this project profitable and, and fit the dimensions of the unique property and we were granted those two variances from the Z B A. We are currently working with, Oxford has a template for a maintenance agreement for the private road that Manitou Lane. That was something that was very important to the community, the homeowners association, and so that is in review with multiple attorneys representing to make sure everybody's in agreement with it and we expect to finalize that in, in the not-too-distant future. One of the things that we also worked with in agreement with the building department of Oxford for this maintenance agreement is we have worked out a performance bond so that we guarantee that the, we will have finality to that maintenance agreement that's acceptable to all parties and would be signed off by Oxford's counsel as well, reviewing that document. We recognize that that is something that would still need to be done. So we, at this point, we would be looking for a final site approval with some conditions, we expect. Obviously, the inter municipality agreement finalized, the maintenance agreement finalized, and behind me, of course, is Jim Butler, our expert engineer for any technical questions that you may have at this point, but it has been, it's been a great, it's been a great process working with the group and look forward to continuing that. Anything you want to add to that, David?
Perfect.
Jim?
Good. Okay. Thank you. Why don't we get comments from our consultants? Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should all be in receipt of our review letter dated September 5th. Really, there's just a couple of items that are, are critical to our review. One of them would be with regards to the water distribution. The applicant is not proposing, there, there currently isn't a water line right, adjacent to their site right now, so they're going to be connecting to the Orion Township water system. We have no objection to that. However, we are currently in the design of a new water line down Manitou Lane, so we would request that the applicant, you know, provide us the necessary easements. I believe that the easement that they are providing is only for roadway access and for maintenance, so we would be needing a water main easement on their property and, you know, we just, the only other item is, has to do with the actual roadway itself and the revision going from a 66-foot right-of-way to a 60-foot. I know that they're working through that, through that issue right now. If the 60-foot is not accomplished, then it puts the building in the existing, I keep calling it right-of-way, it's really an easement, but I'm confident that they're going to be able to revise that. So in our letter, we recommended postponement of this. That was simply because, based on the ordinances, I can't let something go through until I have all that documentation in front of us. They did provide something from, I believe it was from their attorney, a statement from their attorney saying that they're, that they're the only one that needs to sign the revised easement document. No offense, but I would prefer that the Oxford Township attorney also review that and if that's his opinion, that he, that they are the only entity that needs to sign that document to revise it, then I would certainly accept that. So those are really, I mean, we've talked over the phone and they know our position. But other than that, with regards to the engineering aspects related to the site, I know that it can be worked out and they seem very forthcoming and willing to work with us on that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Laura?
Yes. So I'll just run through, you also should be in receipt of our, our final review, and so I'll just run through the items that we identified in the summary, some of which have been met, and so I'll do those too as well. We recognize that all the items should be addressed to the intersection of the planning commission prior to the final site plan approval. Approve the dimensional variance from 75, from the 75-foot setback requirement on the north side of the property, which they received on Monday from the Z B A. A waiver of the setback variance depended on the execution of the interlocal agreement, which we discussed in the interlocal agreement committee meeting today, group meeting today. That will be integrated in that document. Approval of the interlocal agreement documents by our township attorney when it is crafted and then reviewed will require approval, we, we recommend that you require approval as well. Approval of the revised private road easement documents by the township attorney, like Jim just said, and like we've said before, that, that does need to be reviewed and approved by our, by the township attorney. They needed to require, or to receive a variance of the relocation of access to the site from a county primary road to a private road easement, which they did receive on Monday as well at the Z B A meeting. And approval of the reconstruction of the Manitou Lane easement from shared interest property owners, because as we, as they say in the, as they've stated in their submittal, the plan proposes to remove and reconstruct 575 feet of the Manitou Lane roadway, and we recommend that approval of landowners having a shared interest in the private road may need to be obtained depending on the details of the recorded roadway easement, who has an interest in that easement. And then also the sign details were submitted, however, I, we found them not to be in compliance with the ordinance and so we recommend that those are resubmitted and they can be approved administratively when resubmitted. That is our last requirement, that's our recommendation.
Okay. And we've also got this from the Oxford Fire Department. They made the following comments. I don't know if you've seen this, but no parking, fire lane signs, yeah? You've got each one of these covered?
Yes.
Yeah, all of those are covered. Okay. At this point, is there any, anyone out in the public that has any comments about this final site plan? Just come up to the lectern and state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to make a comment.
My name is Turner Hauser and I live at 605 Manitou Lane, and I just had a couple of questions. First, thank you. I think it's an awesome opportunity, especially for additional employment and so on, especially, you know, as, as, as our seniors need facilities, so certainly a wonderful facility. I, I don't like the removal of 800 trees, but you know what? There's a good site plan there and, and I appreciate the attention to the detail of adding some of that, that back in. Couple of questions I had was, there's 33 homes in, in our subdivision and in any of the site plans, which my apologies, it's my own fault, I'm behind on this process. I just received the document yesterday, but in the site plan, nowhere does it show in any of this, the, the neighborhoods that exist there. We have, and you guys, part of my neighbors might help me out here, I think we have maybe nine, nine or 10 residents in, in a different development that is to the south of Manitou?
No.
And, is it nine?
Nine.
And then I think there's 33 that are in our sub. It's 31. And it's a beautiful subdivision. We've, we've enjoyed the, the quiet nature of that for a number of years and although the site is a bit of a nice or it's a natural environment and, and it's, it's going to be sad to see it go, but again, it's, it's progress. The question I had was, one, I didn't see any sidewalks in the site plan and the only reason why I say that is because with the children that are in the sub now, they are transported typically down to the, at 24 and the entrance of Manitou for bus transportation for school, and it's always a pileup down there, right? You get a lineup of, of parents that will, that will park there waiting for the buses and upon return, there's a pile of cars that are waiting for their children to get off. Some events, some of the children do make the trek home and walk, many of them are very young, but with the years of impact to come, it was a consideration I saw in the site plan to think with the increase of traffic at two entrances and exits are dumping directly onto Manitou, I thought at first that maybe it would go to directly to Lapeer Road, but with the addition of the number of parking spots and employees at the new facility, along with over 110 parking places at the apartment complex, coupled with the traffic coming from the two subs, I didn't see any kind of traffic assessment or traffic plan that exists there, so maybe that could be taken into consideration. So the sidewalk was a concern because if the children have to walk now on a highly trafficked road, then it puts them in, in some danger. Secondly is the turn lane. I didn't see this. I know M dot or the, you know, the county would have to maybe get involved from a road commission standpoint, but it's already a bit hectic now where the turnaround is to go back south on Lapeer Road to enter our sub is a short distance to Manitou. So you have to stomp on it just to get out of that turnaround and make your way to make that right-hand turn. So it's, it's already complicated. If we add traffic from folks wanting to go south to get into the new facility, that'll complicate matters, so I don't know if the road commission needs to be involved or what, but maybe we should consider at least a right-hand turn lane. That might necessitate the bus stop as well, because right now with the narrowed entrance, right now it's kind of expanded because there's two driveways that kind of intersect there, it's going to be restrictive. I'm not sure where the bus is going to be stopping properly on Lapeer Road for a pickup. So I've covered the traffic study. I didn't see any results or if that was conducted based on our neighborhood traffic combined with the new traffic. The turn lane has been covered, both for bus and traffic. The sidewalk has been covered and the waiting area for parents. So again, I just hate to see a whole bunch of cars stacked up down there at their new entrance area because the parents just don't have a choice, right? They have to be able to pick up some from somewhere. So yeah, if, if you all could please consider that as well as the developers, it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak about the final site plan?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Andrew Greiser. I live on 1750 Algonquin Trail on Lake Orion, also in the same subdivision. My neighbor here basically talked about most of the points that I want to talk about, but what I want to reiterate is I've lived in the sub since it, almost since it opened around 2002, and the issue with not having a good access in terms of sidewalks for the kids has been a problem since the beginning. My kids now, they're driving there in the high school, but I never had the opportunity that my kids could walk to the bus stop because it's far too dangerous. In fact, it's far too dangerous even to ride a bike through there because the traffic and with the trees trying to get in there. So I think it's essential. I don't think it should be an option that there's a sidewalk put in there. I think that you here as the planning commission have a duty that we have a sidewalk there because right now, the school bus will not come into our sub. What you'll see with our subdivision, we had since the inception, the planning was not done properly, that whatever issue that we had was always like, well, we can't do anything about it, you know, nobody put the plan in. And the bus stop is one where we went to the school, we told the school, we talked to the principal and said, hey, it's dangerous place, we need the bus to come in. Well, the bus won't come in and we don't have a sidewalk. So I think before anything is approved, it's essential that we have a sidewalk. Same thing was with the road. Since we were there, we've always had an issue with the road, the maintenance of it, with the potholes. We looked through the documents that we had. I myself came here to the supervisor, I don't think it was the same person that's here now, but we pretty much got the runaround and it was the same thing. Well, it's not clearly written in here. We should have done it when the settlement of Manitou came in. We should have changed it then. Now we have the opportunity to get a maintenance agreement, but again, before you approve anything, I think we need agreement because it's not just our subdivision, it's the church, it's the other neighborhood of the nine houses that have to agree. What happens if you approve this and now we don't get approval or agreement on the maintenance plan? So I think that needs to be done up front, you know, with the guidance of the commissioner here, because once we have everything going forward, it's going to be too late and we're going to be sitting here like we did before where we're going to come to you and nobody's going to be able to do anything.
What school district?
Lake Orion.
We're, our subdivision is Lake Orion.
I thought you were Lake Orion. I thought it was Orion.
Thanks, thank you.
Can I ask a question while he's up here? He's been there longer. Is there a road maintenance agreement already?
There was, there was one at one time that was, and it's very confusing where the, when it was initially developed, the settlement of Manitou Apartments there, they initially had some type of agreement with the church, but it's, we can bring it to you when we, or I think I've, I've brought it here before, but it's very vague and not enforceable.
So there is a road maintenance agreement in place?
It's not real, I guess it's not really, it's, everything is by default.
What does the subdivision do now?
We, we just maintain the road from our subdivision.
From the entrance?
From the entrance of our subdivision.
Okay.
And then right now, the plowing gets done by the apartments and then we've gotten together, we've tried to get an agreement together, you know, we've had residents from our neighborhood, you know. had residents from our neighborhood, you know, since the potholes weren't being fixed, you know, when we went to the apartments to say, hey, you guys got to fix the potholes, they wouldn't fix it. At that time, I think a dentist owned the place. And so, we went to the township, and we said, we have a road here that's dangerous, there's potholes here, they told us to go see the fire department, we went to them, they said, well, the road's not bad enough to be a danger, and so, we couldn't get anywhere with that.
Well, and one comment that I'll make, they're improving the road for several hundred feet.
Yes.
From M24 to basically, I guess, the end of their property.
No.
Now, under the current site.
Correct. But then who's maintaining that, right? There has to be an agreement. What happens in, five years from now, there's potholes in there, right? Who's going to fix that? You know, who's going to solve it? It's exactly now, right? The apartments are plowing it, but when there's a pothole in there, they say, hey, man, we're good with it. You know, and we don't want to take matters in our own hands and go in there and shovel it, as we have, right? There's other legal consequences, and we don't own the road either. So even though we're happy there's a new road going on, and we have nothing against the, or at least I personally don't have anything against the construction that's going on there, but I don't want to kick the can down the road again, because it was done, when our subdivision came in there, nothing was done, right? There should have been some type of agreement or amendment done when the settlement of Manitou came in there, and there was never anything done. So I don't want to kick the can, I have no problem with this here, but I want the sidewalks, I want the planning to be up front, right? Sidewalks, the lighting, all those things.
Do you have sidewalks in your subdivision?
No, we don't. No, we don't.
So they would walk in the street?
Correct. But again, if you look at, in our street, obviously it would be more optimal if we had sidewalks, but it's pretty safe to go in our neighborhood, but as soon as you get in that stretch, there's a wind in there with trees, and people are just gunning it through there, and then especially now, you're going to be adding the traffic from the, from, you know, the home here, right? You're going to have more traffic up there.
But what, I think what you're asking for is them to make improvements off-site.
Well, I think we need a sidewalk here, whoever does that improvement, or whatever it is.
I'm just trying to point it out.
Yeah.
It would be difficult for the planning commission to ask someone to make improvements off-site. So, I'm just being upfront.
What do you mean, difficult for?
He's not asking for sidewalks in our sub.
Not in our sub, I'm just asking.
Even to your sub, I mean.
That's on their property, isn't it?
I'd have to be careful on what I comment to, but.
They have frontage.
Jack? Pardon me?
What's the reason the buses won't go into the sub?
They say that the buses can't turn around in our sub, because of the quartz, quartz are too, I guess, for turning angle, I mean, that's what they say.
There's a cul-de-sac that exists there, so there's not an additional exit from the sub. There's only one road in and one road out.
Because the sub that I live in is much bigger than what you guys have, and Oxford buses come in here, they back up.
Maybe every district comes.
That's your difference.
At Oxford, they're Lake Orion.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm surprised, right? That's what they told us, I'm surprised that.
Driving to your sub is no different than driving to ours, and they come in our sub.
It may be the case, but we've gone to the Lake Orion, we've gone, we've talked to the principal, we've explained the safety and aspect of it, and, you know, now we have an opportunity to do something about it, right? And putting a sidewalk in there is something you can do as you're tearing up the road. So.
All the way down.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, thank you for those comments. I don't know, I apologize, were you at the first site meeting? Uh, no. Okay. If you guys would indulge me just for a moment, a couple of things that we're trying to do to enhance safety, and we recognize and try to make the situation better. So, obviously, 575 feet of the road is being redone, and correcting the drainage issue that's there, which would be, obviously, if somebody's walking there, to enhance it to be safer. We're also adding a curb to it, that is not there today. And by the byproduct of also removing some of those trees, it clears up the site vision for drivers. It was also a recommendation from the township planner, that some traffic calming was added to there, so that would be signage of establishing a speed limit that's there. We had some comments from folks that, you know, sometimes when you're late getting your kids to the school bus, you're hustling, and so, it was recommended to put some traffic calming measures in, which we agreed to as well. So I think that we have tried to take a very good, besides looking at it just from our development standpoint as to how it would benefit the community, and what is manageable within the space, and ultimately, we do that. After our last meeting, I had a conversation with a mother about the busing, because I, like, Mr. Hunwick here would kind of scratch my head of why they don't come in your sub, that's a unique situation. I believe the answer that was given back to me is, ultimately, that's a Lake Orion busing issue. And maybe when the road that we put in is all enhanced, that will encourage them to come in. And we are absolutely agreeing to, which is why we were talking about, we have a performance bond, that we will come to a mutually beneficial maintenance agreement, so that that road is maintained, and that all parties that are privy to it are in agreement with it, so that you can feel comfortable that it's going to be plowed, it's going to have salt put down, it's going to be repaired when it's necessary, so that the can isn't kicked down the road. I think that's a fair question. I don't know if that helps you a little bit of what we're doing.
Okay. I appreciate it, again. You know, I appreciate what you said, but again, I just want to reiterate what he said, it's a Lake Orion school issue, right? I mean, that's where we've been, right? It's been with the road, it's this issue, it's a private road, the same with the school, you know, he just said it right there, it's a Lake Orion school issue, right? You guys are the planners here, right? You guys have seen our sub, obviously, it evolved, right? The way it happened, things didn't, you know, it was never really planned, right? It was like, okay, we're going to throw this in here. Now we have the opportunity, throw a sidewalk in there, right? That's, make it safe, right?
Thank you.
Even now, you don't even see our sub. Look at our sub. It's a big area. There are 400 to half a million dollar homes back in there, over 30 of them, it's not, it's a small community. There's a lot of great folks back there, all we just want to do is be safe.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to the commissioner comments, because I know we have quite a few. Ed?
First of all, if they were willing to put in a sidewalk, is there room to put in a sidewalk?
They would probably eliminate all of the trees on the south side of the road, between the edge of the road and the wetland. So then you're going to have people disappointed that they put in a sidewalk, but they cut down 50 trees.
What about on the other side of the road? No?
It's not their property.
No, that's true. The reason why I'm asking the question is, could the safety path be put there in lieu of on 24?
Let me try to. Yeah, Michael. Currently, the piece of property that they're tearing the building down is not serviced by Manitou Lane. It's their own driveway. It meets Manitou Lane at M24 at a Y. What they're considered doing is taking Manitou Lane and using it for the ingress and egress to the facility, and getting rid of that old driveway, and paving that road to the end, all the way to that building. So the road improvements that you talked about will be there for the property they control.
Correct.
Now, what happens with the apartment and the other church is what these guys took on their development to improve, with the traffic calming, with the road, they eliminated a driveway, and it's giving you, how many feet is that, Jim Butler?
575.
575 feet of brand-new road, okay? They're not responsible for, like Tom was saying, off their property. They can't go on the church property and do things, they can't go on your property and do things. So they've brought it, they've brought what they can control.
Correct.
Up to, better than, it would be county standards, right, Jim? Manitou Lane, private road.
Essentially, the township standards are very similar to the county standards, yes.
They're going to be bringing it up to township standards for the property they own.
For what they own, correct.
Yeah.
The property fronts Manitou, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It fronts Manitou, so it's required to have a sidewalk.
It's a private road.
Even on a private road.
It is?
No, no.
I don't think so.
No, it's not.
It exists there at Manitou, it's on the site plan, if you look at that.
It's just a private road, it's not.
Well, it's a private road, don't we have, this is a commercial development.
No.
Commercial development requires a sidewalk, doesn't it, on a road? Private or public, it's still being used by public.
I get, I don't want to comment, I get confused.
Well, I mean, if it's not a private road, if they're accessing the road and using it for their, it's a public road.
I don't believe they have to.
Lauren just said no.
It's a private road, it's considered a private road, sidewalk is not required, and it's actually considered a residential development.
So they're accessing the development through a private road?
Yes.
Which our ordinance would say, in any other commercial development, would have to be on a public road.
Our ordinance says that this use has to be on a public road, on a county road, and they received a variance from the ZBA on Monday for that.
And the sidewalk issue wasn't addressed?
No, sidewalk is not required.
Even if it's rezoned?
It's not rezoned.
It's not rezoned.
So it's still zoned as residential?
So sidewalk would be required if it was, sidewalk would be required normally, because this would have to be on a public road, but since it's allowed to be on a private road, then the sidewalk isn't required anymore. I don't think that is a variant that was considered.
Thing is, they're gaining 575 feet of the part of the road that you want improved.
Well, they have to improve it to use it.
Additional traffic on that.
Look at guys, why are you guys putting the water in there, right? You've got an opportunity now to do it, right? The same way here, this keeps getting kicked down the road, right? Now I got more traffic, now I have no opportunity to do it, even though I did it before. Why would you ask the zoning? You guys are the planning commission, do the planning there, right? Do some planning there, right? Fix the errors of the past.
And it's nice to have a new road, it's 500 feet as long.
We're happy with that.
We were happy with that, but we didn't ask for it. So if it's going to be granted, that's understandable, but keep in mind that it's very nice, but the bottom line is, is that there's additional traffic, otherwise you wouldn't have two full entrances on Manitou. But with that additional traffic, or additional hazards, right?
What's happening on that little tab of property? That's the yellow is the property line, right?
This?
Because all our plans stop short of that, what's happening over there?
That's being split, and sold to the homeowner that lives on the lake.
Well, I'm the property owner of the lot that's being discussed right now.
Come on up to the lectern and state your name, please.
My name's Keith Ferguson, I live at 545 Manitou Lane, in the association with the other gentleman in speaking. I'm also the property owner of, in question at this point. And so if you look at the line, the property crosses the road between the apartment complex and the church.
Yeah.
That's the end of where their responsibility would be at this point. And then there's a dirt road after the apartment complex.
Here.
There, yes, as it goes south. So if you start to drop down, that's a dirt road that has been an easement granted to the nine houses that are along the lakeside. That road stretch is separate from the rest of it, it has a different easement.
So all the lot size and the calculations that was done without that piece in it?
I'm sorry?
No, the, that, I mean, that's still part of the parcel, that hasn't been split.
But he's saying it's going to be split, I'm like hearing all this.
They haven't applied for anything yet, we haven't.
Because all the calculations were based, if I remember right, on that piece being a part of it for size and everything.
Yeah, and when it is, when they apply for a split, we'll consider all of those calculations again.
Because the reason I'm saying that is, is they could put a bus turnaround or a loop or something that would allow students to get on a bus at that point, which is kind of at the entrance of all those subs, away from 24, which could be a solution to the sidewalk issue, to just have a loop where the bus pulls in and comes back out.
It would have to go onto the apartments, it's a funny area right there.
It's very, very tight, and there's a wetland.
Yes, we don't have anything, nothing.
With the yellow line that's between the apartment complex, that's the T shape, then just south of the yellow line, that's all wetland area, so there's really nothing you can do in that space, including where the jog is by the dirt road. Basically, right after the dirt road to the east side, it drops down almost immediately into what's considered wetland, so, I mean, according to DNR, we couldn't do anything in that space as it is anyways, which means then, if you were to do any type of a turnaround, it would actually have to either go on to the apartments property, or the association's property. The association owns a piece of property directly behind the apartments, there's a thin, it's about 100 foot wide, I forget how long it is, it's the little notch that's in the property that I own, right that strip through there, that is actually property that belongs to the association. They recently, or are in the process of taking ownership of that. So any, if you're preserving the wetland, or you're not allowed to do anything because of the wetland area, then the result would have to be something done on either the association's property, or on the apartment complex property.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I don't have that in my file, at least I can't open it, that map in there?
This map?
Yeah.
It's from the planner's review. It's the second page, I think.
I was intending from a sidewalk standpoint, it'd be this fantastic thing that ran all the way into the neighborhood, that was the point. I think it's just safe access from the roadway, because of the increased traffic, past your second drive, you know, where I'm referring to, the southern driveway that's on Manitou. Once you get past that, then it avoids any of the concern.
Okay, I need to bring the conversation back to any concerns the commissioners have about the current site plan, as it was reviewed in your packets.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You had mentioned that, this is going to sound strange, but something caught my ear, it said that Tom Berger was in the meeting, when you guys were all meeting for this?
This is the first meeting I've attended.
Not you, the developer. I mean, it was a coordinated meeting that you had with Orion, and so what capacity was he meeting with you at?
I'm sorry?
What capacity was he meeting with? What capacity was he at the meeting with?
Who's he?
Tom Berger, he said he was at the meeting.
Yeah, so I don't want to speak for Tom, I had asked, because of the coordinated effort in trying to figure out this intermunicipality agreement, to have the supervisors get together and discuss what made sense in the process, of who would be doing what, and.
And so he was there.
Who showed up to the meeting?
Tom, pardon me, you were there in what capacity?
Building department.
Building department.
The building official, I can answer that.
Okay, he was there as building official, and, but he's sitting on the, I know I have to sit, because I was on ZBA, I had to sit down, because you're kind of sitting in two positions, and I respect you very much, Tom, but I am hearing something that just kind of concerns me, because you have a lot of ex parte communication.
Mr. Dunn asked me to be at the meeting based on the permit process that would take place for construction activity.
Okay.
Because it's very difficult for two municipalities to permit one single project.
And so the permit through Oxford?
We're not going to permit it through Oxford, it's going to be permitted through Orion. The majority of the development is in Orion, but there's going to be a coordinated effort between the building department of Oxford and the building department of Orion, to make the process have one permit, and then coordinated inspection efforts between both departments, to make sure that compliance is met on both jurisdictions. Because by law, we are responsible for certain inspections to take place within that facility, and so is Lake Orion, because they're in two different communities. So there has to be an intergovernmental agreement for the inspection process to occur, and I meant for that reason, and I walked out after the other, so I don't know, I was only there for the construction component of it.
And that's as an Oxford inspector?
Yes.
Jack, are you weighing on that?
And there's, I'm just, let me finish here.
Yeah.
I know there's revision in the Michigan Planning Act that says that no contractor, employer, agent for our township can sit on the planning commission. And so when that happened, that kind of brought up my role as a dual person, and how that can be allowed, and I just want to make sure that I'm not participating. And I just wanna make sure that I'm not participating in anything that's not allowed.
Through Mr. Rentrapp, and the reason, because I sit on the planning commission?
Right, because it says specifically you can't.
I cannot discuss any zoning requirements in regards to.
Okay, I know it says you can't, it says that no member of the planning commission can be an employee or a contractor, it says it right in the law, word for word.
What do you mean by employee?
It says it, the Michigan planning law says it, word for word, what I'm saying. It says, "No member of the planning commission can be an employee or a contractor. If you receive money from the township for any kind of work, you can't sit on the planning commission."
Well, I'll have to ask Mr. Dunn that question.
And so I, I brought this up multiple times, and I've asked this to be looked at, and I have nothing, I don't believe you're doing anything wrong knowingly. But it's a problem I've had in the past.
If it's a problem for me, then I need to know.
The crux to the meeting was to set the interlocal agreement between Orion and Oxford.
Right, well, I just want the legalities clear, because I sit on this meeting, and I, and I swear to uphold the law, and I'm seeing something that's a conflict.
We held a meeting for the approval of the interlocal agreement between Orion and Oxford for our attorneys. And the, the question of who's gonna pull the building permit, who's gonna do the inspections came up. And all Tom said is, here's what we feel should be done for the inspections, nothing about the interlocal agreement Tom was part of.
I don't believe Tom would purposely ever do anything illegal nor, I'm saying, I'm seeing a situation, and, and that's what I'm concerned about.
And we don't believe we did anything wrong, but I think that the hard work that went into this, to make this interlocal agreement, wouldn't have come to fruition unless the Orion building department and Tom had talked, just like our fire departments have talked. They're also employees of the township, just like the Oakland County sheriffs have talked.
Right, but they're professionals, they're not members of this board.
Well, they're also.
But you, as a trustee, are also bound by these laws, and that's, that's why I'm saying there's a problem that I'm seeing in conflict with the act, and I would like it looked at just for my own peace of mind. And, and I'd be happy to read that section of the act off, but I, I know we have another professional planner here that's familiar with the Michigan Planning Act, and it does state that no member of the, the planning commission can be an employee, am I wrong?
I would have to look it up.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners in reference to the site plan?
Well, in reference to the site plan, the other corner that's on, and like I said, I can't get, I've been having a problem with the data that I've been getting here for the meeting, but I can't get that to blow up. Is there a spot where a simple loop could be made, where that Y is on the property, where a simple bus in the very northwest section? The upper part of the L?
Here.
Yep. I'm just looking for solutions that would make the developer a hero and help the neighborhood.
Actually, the way the road curves around, you can see the white, there's also a road leading into the back of the apartments. There, there is not enough space on the northwest, that little corner there.
Sorry. I'm saying, is that corner, is it a wetland, or is there something there?
On the east side is a wetland.
The west side, the west, it's in that little, it looks like a, like a nose?
It's, there's not enough room to be able to loop in there, it's, it's the width of a, of a bus.
I'm not, just that corner of the property, but I'm saying, is that a commons or an open space?
Where, that o, that.
Yeah, up, right up in the corner, up, 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 up.
Yeah, just, just to the west.
Yeah, right there where his cursor is, is that to the west and south of that?
To the west of that is the association's property.
Well, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be an option to have a bus loop right there, where the bus could come in, loop, come back on the other piece and come back out, and pick up the kids right there, it would be a common meeting ground, it's kind of a safety area away from 24. I'm just throwing something out that the association might be able to work with the developer on putting a simple bus, you see what I'm saying, a bus loop right there? Where they could come in and loop back.
So Commissioner, I, that isn't on our property, that may be a solution that the homeowners association would like.
Yeah, because a little part of it would be.
On their property, I, I don't wanna comment on what, what they would want to do on their property.
Correct. I understand.
There is a, a simple option, I did mention the fact that we're lacking a, a southbound turn lane onto Manitou from 24. I, I truly believe that, that that may be sufficient for a safe bus pull over, to be able to pick students up. But again, that would have to be a road commission question whether or not they would entertain doing something and maybe even extending it south of Manitou slightly, to ensure that there's a safe bus stop there, but.
Okay, I guess my one question just goes back to, and I just wanna know if we were fully informed that by allowing that to be on a private road, we were giving up the mandate for a sidewalk? This bothers me, I feel like I got left out of the loop on that.
Are you referring, are you asking me?
I'm just, not just you, but I'm asking our planning commission chair.
Sidewalk was never.
We have a lot of problems with private roads in our, in our community, we don't have maintenance agreements, it's a big problem. I know many people who have the same situation, but now we have a commercial development on a private road. And now we're said that, that sidewalks aren't necessary. I, I'm thinking when you give a variance, you allow it to be on a private road, but you're still holding it to the public road standards. And so I'm trying to figure out, did we really give them a variance to not have a sidewalk? Because in my mind, we gave them a variance to call that private road a, a public road for purposes of it, but we would still hold them to the standards of a public road. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that, that wasn't done, this is still a private road, it was never met to, I asked today if we could make it a public road, and it was not.
Right, I'm saying by what we, we, our private road and public road in terms of construction is identical, everything's pretty much identical. If you have a public road and you build it to standard, you should be able to turn it over to the county. So my question, in a technical sense, it may actually have to have a legal review, is when we gave a variance to have it on a private road, were we also varying the requirements of the things that would be required on a public road, i.e. a sidewalk? I don't believe we were, I believe we were just saying we would allow it on a private road, but we weren't changing the standards that would be required of it being on a public road.
It's still a private road, and it doesn't require a sidewalk.
It's the standards that we would adhere to, otherwise I would think it would have to go to the ZBA for a hearing on the, on the sidewalk.
It, it doesn't have to, because it's still a private road. It did not get changed to a public road, which would require a, a sidewalk.
I believe I have standing in there, I really truly believe that that's not what was given up. If we allowed it to be on a private road, it didn't mean we were waiving the standards of a public road, just that it was on a private road, that would meet the standards of a public road.
Seems that commercial use would mandate that it become public, since there's gonna be the public moving on that, on that, that road.
I don't disagree.
Again, I think the frustration that we have, right, because of the sidewalks, the traffic, and the neighbors that are here, I don't know that anybody investigated that. Secondly, if you look at how our planning is going, right, there's a little piece, you know, road provisions just looking at the road, these guys are just worried that they get their things squeezed in, right? We're here again in the middle, trying to get the safety, I mean, we, this whole thing needs to look at a whole plan, it gets to be piece by piece on it, right? Right now, we don't have a safe road for our kids to come out to the bus stop. So, so if you come to, if you come to our neighborhood during the school time, you'll see a bunch of cars lined up there, you'll see traffic in that area. Now that you're gonna have the residential home there, you're gonna have a bunch of people standing there, blocking traffic in there. Come one time, go one time during the school time, you'll see probably four or five cars just.
Who, who made the determination that it doesn't require a sidewalk?
The ordinance makes that determination.
Who did?
It's not, it's not in the ordinance that it requires a sidewalk, a private road, just like their subdivision.
So if somebody wanted to challenge that, they could actually challenge that decision. If somebody wanted to challenge it and say it's required to have sidewalks, they could challenge that decision and say the variance was simply to put it on a public, a public or a private road, it was not to take away the necessity for a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think at this, in the strict description written under 514, what's required of a convalescent nursing home, it states that all vehicular ingress and egress shall be directly onto a county primary road. It does not specify if county road standards then would follow if that was given. So the variance was given from that requirement.
Right.
And being that it was moved to a private road, I mean, the standards of the private road don't automatically become, you, the county road standards don't transfer to that, to that private road because of that, the, we don't create a whole new set of standards because of that.
Well, I, I'm just saying the fact that we allowed it to have access, I don't know that necess, necessarily waived the requirements of everything else that would have to be on the public road, we just allow it to be on a public, a private road.
But even public roads don't require sidewalks.
Yes, it does, that's what I'm saying, I don't think they waived the requirement for that when they allowed it to be on a private road. And that's something that a citizen could challenge.
Right, right now, let me say one thing, right now, if you look at all the way to the right where the LaPierre Road is, most people, they're waiting in the area where the church driveway is, right? Which, which isn't gonna be there anymore, right? So, so they're standing right in the front. When you take that away and you make the new entrance, you're gonna have people waiting there, right in the street, as people are trying to get into the home and getting into the neighborhood. Now they're more or less waiting where that church is, which is empty, and there were times when they had alcohol anonymous classes at the church that happened right in the morning, and we had a lot of difficulty, people were waiting there, and we almost had a lot, a few accidents when they came in because we had the school bus kids coming in there. So you're gonna have that same scenario now when you have the home there.
Well, as a board, we have a right to ask the plant, ask the zoning board if that was their intent, and have them look at that. That is something we can do.
Yeah, this is the new area here, and so when we had the problem in when people would be jetting in here, people waited here, and the guys came late for their alcohol anonymous, they almost, they had an accident here. When this is gone, where are the parents gonna wait now with their kids, right?
The parents were waiting on private property.
They're gonna be waiting on the road, right?
They, they were waiting on private property to begin with, so they were trespassing.
On the private road they were waiting?
Yes.
That's not, that's not private property.
That's a driveway, that's their driveway.
Okay, if they were trespassing or not, right, where are you gonna put the parents now?
It, I'm not gonna put them anywhere.
You're only trespassing if you've been asked to leave, so, that, I wouldn't say something like that, I, I think that's inflammatory.
I'm asking you, right, you guys are the planners, I'm asking you, okay, now you have the driveway in, right? I can't leave my kids standing here alone on the bus stop, right? So the parents are waiting in their car, so they're just waiting on the side of the road, right?
So how does a sidewalk alleviate that problem?
Now I can have the kids walk, walk to the bus stop, right?
So you think they can walk instead of cars waiting, is what I'm saying?
That's the whole, whole intent of it.
So what options on 24 would there be to alleviate that problem? Because he said that there was something you could do.
I was, I was just trying to compromise, simply change the direction.
Because what, MDOT's redoing 24 anyway, I don't, is there, is, is there a plan in place yet for MDOT's reconstruction? Do you know if they're?
They're not, to my knowledge, they're not planning any improvements, they're keeping the turnarounds where they're at. And they're not, you know, going to be doing any deceleration lanes or anything. I mean, we haven't seen the final plans yet, they're still developing them, but based on our discussions a year ago, there's no proposed improvements at that intersection, other than the resurfacing and so forth of the roadway.
That's why I've inquired about a traffic plan, whether or not it was reviewed, what type of traffic increases could be seen as a result? Have we seen tubes or corners in the road or?
We're not looking at this as a whole, right? You just said the Oakland County roads is not doing anything, so that's not gonna solve anything there. Nobody's looking at this whole thing as a whole, so.
I, I think the variance that was granted to override the county requirements for this type of facility to have their ingress and ingress on a county road or public road is where things maybe got screwed up a bit, because we wouldn't even be talking about this if it was the fact that the entrance and exit of the new facility would have been directly on the Pierre Road, at a different area other than the private road that exists now, right? But now that all the traffic resides on Manitou, and ingress and egress occur at the same intersection that it does now, with the reduced capacity at that intersection multiplies the problem.
Okay, I, I think we've got a firm hold on the, the issues that you guys have with the safety of the, at the bottom of that drive. One more comment, please.
With the addition of the property to the association, that strip that's up in there, I mean, could the association then potentially propose an area for where the bus would have room in that location, but that would be on the association?
Right.
If that's, if that needs to be addressed.
That is possible, that is totally possible, I suppose, but, exactly. So.
Thanks for the community help, well, good point, thank you. Hold on, we're doing $10 million worth of trees and building this giant building, right?
We're doing a half a million dollars worth of improvement.
Okay, order, please.
For you, for you, for your benefit, for you.
Okay, I'm.
They haven't done anything of purpose for us, right?
You wanted to.
Gentlemen, 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 really, we're, we're at a point where actually talking about commissioners discussion, I've, I've kinda let it go overboard, okay? We understand what your concerns are with the current situation that that drive is in, there is a new drive being put in. Your concern has definitely been noted, I'm not sure that this, the owner of this site can fix that immediately, okay?
Well, I think you're speaking for yourself, I mean, I, I do believe that there's a question of fact on whether or not the ZBA actually waived the sidewalk requirement. And we, as a board, can actually ask the ZBA that question. Any, any board can ask the ZBA to reavailability, any member of the public can petition for a clarification, that's what the ZBA does. They answer questions. And, and I would think that question has to be done first, did we actually waive the sidewalk requirement?
My question would be, did the ZBA knowingly know what the ordinance was when they did their variance?
But that's the question for the ZBA, and they can, they can look at that and make it the determination.
Whoever's on the ZBA needs to know that the sidewalks are not required on a private road before they granted the variance for a private road to have.
But this, that's what this board can ask, if it was the ZBA's intention when they did that ruling to also waive the requirement for sidewalk.
When we had.
I think the finding is unclear, I think there's amb, there's a question of fact.
Well, I think that, like, like I stated, the, the regulations of the county road do not transfer with the variance to a private road, there's all.
Well, that's your opinion, where are you basing that in our ordinance?
I'm basing it on the fact that it doesn't state any of that in the ordinance.
But it doesn't say that it doesn't either. If the variance first was to allow them to be on a, on a pub, on a private road, that's one thing, but it didn't vary, it didn't vary the requirements of the public road. It just said, we're not going to make them call it a public road.
It transfers the ingress and egress to a private road, so it no longer makes that use.
Right, well, I'm just one opinion, I'm saying, to clarify it, we can ask the zoning board if that was their intention. And get a yes or no, if it wasn't their intention, then we know we didn't waive the sidewalk requirement. If it was, then we did, we know we did. And then the citizens can, can actually challenge that, but we have to know who made that decision. Because in order for someone to challenge it, they need to know where it started.
They're, they weren't, they're not waiving that, they're not waiving that, that wasn't up for discussion, that wasn't the variance that they gave, that wasn't part of their consideration for that variance. What their variance was, is whether or not they would allow the ingress and egress of this use onto a private road versus a county road. And by waiving that, by allowing a variance for that, they, they, you forfeit the requirements.
And the perimeter never had anything to do with the sidewalks on it anyway, they were never noted, correct?
Yes, you're right.
Right.
Okay.
Can I maybe also make one recommendation? So initially with the way the road was set up now, obviously there's been problems in the past regarding the maintenance of the road. But since half of the road is already being replaced, basically, that means the association, the apartments, aren't responsible for the costs that were associated at, which were significant at the time I was on the board. I think the bill was approximately $100,000 to redo the road to bring it back up to specs. So immediately, the apartments and the association are saving $50,000 at a minimum. Even more if the road had deteriorated, which it had. So if, if the sidewalks are that important, and the savings from not having to do half of the road are so significant, what if the association paid for the sidewalk? From the end of the road to the parking area of the church, which would give families easy place to park, drop their children off, then be able to walk down to where the bus is located, and that would get the sidewalk in at a minimal cost to the association that could. compared to the road. It gives an excellent drop-off location for children because it's in a safe area off of the road completely.
Or you could just develop the site and not redo the road.
So...
Go ahead and develop your site.
So again, right? It all comes down to dollars and cents. Not, not anything planning again, right? Maybe there's some other options, right? Right now, I don't know. Is the school bus going to say, I can turn around at the church, right? Right now, they said the only place they can do it, right? I got the same thing from them. They only go up to Lapeer Road.
I recommend that the school bus turns around at the church is that the sidewalk goes to the church's parking lot where people could drop their children off. You had mentioned that then the kids would walk down the sidewalk to 24 where the bus would pick them up. And that would, that would give you the sidewalk to 24. It gives a parking place that's off of the road for people to pick their children up and to drop their children off.
It's a potential option. But again, to my point that I made, that stuff has to be planned out before this stuff gets approved, right? Because at the end of the day, everyone is saying, you guys are saying the great job you're doing. You guys are obviously concerned about putting your site in there at the least cost that you can, right? Because if you didn't care about that, you would say, hey, we'll work with these guys on a sidewalk or whatever. But it has to be planned out before it's approved. If it's going from the church this way or that way, now's the opportunity to do the planning like we're supposed to, right? And finding out if this variance with the road means I still need a sidewalk there, right? Everyone's saying, wow, I think so, or I don't know, or it doesn't.